Good evening. Today is Monday, February -- today is Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. Study session, public comments on study session-related items. Are there any public comments?
Hi. It's Valentine's Day, so I'm going to get in and get out. My name is Alyssa Lasky. I think you probably all know me by now. Likewise, you probably know I'm a third-generation Manisteeian who I'm very proud to be born and raised here. Very proud, especially on a day like today, to have -- to say that I'm a Spartan. I graduated from Michigan State University. And following graduation, for the better part of 10, 12, something like this, years, I relocated to Metro Detroit where I started my career. In that time, I was a homeowner, had the opportunity to experience different towns, to be a homeowner in different towns, which means all the things it means to be a homeowner, paying taxes, having to deal with city ordinances and all the rest. And was -- reached a point in my career, I worked for a software company. I was -- I worked remotely, whether I'm in Metro Detroit or up here. And I said, "What the heck? I'm a small-town girl. I'm going to move back." Right? We all probably know that story by now because I've been here a few times. But what that means is, I'm a small-town girl. I love Manistee. I'm proud that I was born and raised here. And I uprooted my life and invested in moving back in Manistee. And I wasn't quiet growing up. I was involved in youth and government and all of those things. So it should be no surprise that I care about having a voice and the decisions that are being made for, honestly, the money that I pay being a tax-paying citizen. But I would love to never leave Manistee. And decisions that are made today are going to impact whether or not I am able to or feel like it's the right decision to continue living in Manistee for decades to come. And I tell my parents all the time that decisions that are being made may now mean more to me than probably does to them because I'll be around for a lot longer than them. And that's really weird to say and think about, but it's important. It's important because I've invested tons of money moving back to Manistee. I invest many, many, many thousands of dollars every year being a homeowner, tax-paying citizen in the city of Manistee. So there were a few things on the agenda tonight that I just -- I wanted to swing by and maybe give my thoughts on. The first is the sidewalk ordinances. Super happy to see that on the agenda. I think I was the person to bring it up in January after we had some gnarly stuff happen to our sidewalks. Probably the third or fourth time it happened on our sidewalks, but it -- we kind of reached a boiling point where we said, "Hey, let's talk about it. Let's talk about what's happening, why that's acceptable." So we came to a city council meeting in early January and talked about why, frankly, it was unacceptable, that dirt and all this crap was left on our sidewalks. And so anyway, so we just want to get to the root cause, right? And so what I ended up doing, being the person I am, is for not the first time, read the many, many, many hundreds of city ordinances, the pages of city ordinances, and I realized, "Well, what the heck?" I hear in a couple of meetings, and I've heard before, that it's the homeowner's responsibility to do it. Well, it's not. It's not the homeowner's responsibility. Now, granted, my comment was met with very sure comments by the city manager and director of DPW that absolutely it was in the ordinances that it was the homeowner's responsibility, and it's not. And I'm sure more now than I ever was. And I think that I sent a couple of folks evidence of that. But anyway, so I wanted to say, as you -- first of all, thank you for considering this. But what I had suggested at the time was, "Hey, guys, maybe it shouldn't be the -- well, it's not. But maybe we shouldn't make it the homeowner's -- or maybe we should make it the homeowner's responsibility." And with that, it might free up DPW resources to not offer less services, but have time to do a really good job at the things that they're doing. Might create opportunities for small business owners, might create a small revenue source through fees, assuming enforcement. And anyway, so as you consider this tonight, I hope that you're doing so, having already talked to several of the many, many dozens of cities across the state of Michigan who already have similar ordinances and who have successfully enforced them, who have already probably figured out the legalese of who is liable.
Cut you off, but you got about 30 seconds.
Okay, that's fine. And that's good. So I'm almost under my thoughts. But I hope that we're not moving forward, making decisions without already having talked to the many, 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 many people who have already reinvented and used the wheel. Let's not reinvent the wheel, Manistee. Let's just do what works. There are already people who figured it out. The final thing I wanted to talk about was the utility rate. I didn't get a chance to do research to the degree that I would have liked, but I stand here as somebody who's paying $188 had I paid my bill on time, but I only had 13 days to do it, for water and sewer last month. I have a two-person household. We both work from home. Yes, what that means is we don't shower every day. How is it that I pay -- my mom would hate that I said that, by the way. How is it that we pay $188 for two of us who don't use a ton of services and we're talking about increasing them further? We can't continue to increase the services on the people who pay taxes in Manistee. Thank you.
Hello. I'm John Veach, 485 Oxford Court. And you've already received some correspondence from me earlier in the weekend. And I'm grateful to all of you for your responses. And I'm thanking you now rather than individually. And I got to tell you, I took a look at the picture of the broken pipe in question about 4:30 this afternoon. And I really believed your DPW director when he said that I could not prove that the broken pipe was the city's fault. When I looked at that picture, there was a bunch of -- and you look at this. I sent this to everybody. And you can see it for yourself. It just jumped right out at me. Here's a broken pipe exposed at the top with a bunch of what looks like, you know, tar coating that you see all over the edges and the sides from where it had been previously repaired. And above that broken pipe, for a long, long time, there was a patch in the road where the city had done a previous excavation. As I told you in the correspondence, when that broke, my sewer backed up in both halves of the building. And then it couldn't be repaired on a Friday night, as it typically had been, by Mr. Forbes, who dropped absolutely everything that he was doing that day to come get me unplugged. So the sewer wouldn't be there, so the flood wouldn't be there the whole weekend. He couldn't unplug it. He got out to the street, and that's as far -- he said, "You know, I gotta dig up the street." I said, "Oh, no. And I can't do it till Monday." So Monday comes, I get a call, and there's a big hole in the street. And Mr. McCula is standing there, and he says, "There's the break in the sewer. That's why it's clogged up." Mr. McCula says, "You can't prove it was the city." I believed him. I looked at the picture today. I was wrong. That picture has proof that it was the city. And all the other previous correspondence between Mr. McCula and me, I'll let my wife deal with that.
Hi. I'm Pat Veach, and I'm the other half. I wanted to -- first of all, I commend you guys for listening to all of us. I really appreciate it. And I know the service you do to the community is wonderful. And I've been on a couple committees myself, and I know sometimes it's tough. So I appreciate it. I just want to go to a story that I think will be related to this. And that is, my mother fell 14 steps down a stairway in October. And when I went to the hospital, my brother pulled me aside and said, "The doctors say with all her injuries and her past stuff, she's not going to make it." And I just sunk at that point. And I thought, "No, you've got to get yourself together because you've got to face your mother." So I went in there, and I faced my mother. And I said, "We are going to get you somewhere." This happened in October, all right? So I thought, I put all my faith in the doctors and the nurses, and I thought they would respect my mother for how old she was and give her the service. Well, wrong. I had to become her advocate and push for things because now she's 89 years old, and they really don't care if she lives or dies. But I did. So I had to work on respect and consideration for my mother. We got her out of there. She's home at my house now. She is doing well. She has a brace on. That's it. She broke all these bones, and the only thing left is her back. And it's because we push for respect and consideration. And when I look at the list of things that happened, that happened in this case, I do not feel as a taxpayer, I was given the respect and consideration by Mr. McCula. I feel that now I have to push to get that respect and consideration, and that's why I'm here tonight. I can't sit by and say, "Oh, it'll happen." We are taxpayers. We paid for 47 years in this community, both buildings, and we have not said a word. And we have done our share, my husband for sure. And I don't want to sit here again and not push for that respect and consideration. And that's what I'm asking you for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing that I might add is, one of the persons on the council said, "You know, I can't do anything about it. It's up to the city manager. But you know, you have a very simple task here. You are the boss of the city manager. He's your employee."
I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Veach, but your time is up.
Pardon me?
Your time is up.
You can give him a directive as what he should be doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I didn't have anything to say tonight until I heard that. And then I thought, "I have something to say." Most of you know that we had a water issue at our house about a year ago, where we went eight to nine days without any water. And Forbes came right away. I mean, and he said, "It is the city." The city said, "Oh, Forbes says that all the time. It's not us." Back and forth, back and forth. My husband and I ended up paying, I thought, quite a lot of money for having no water for nine days. Cindy Lumber was excellent, called me and said, "Can I bring you water? Can I do this? Can I do that?" By the time we was all said and done, not only did we have a big bill, but we were pretty much told by the city, and then after they got done talking to you, that we were never told we couldn't use our water. Yet every time we turned the water on, it came back up the basement. Well, I guess we could use our water if we wanted to continue putting it out the basement window, raw sewage. I guess we could have used it. So my point is, nobody should get the runaround from the DPW like we do. And we had sat down with the attorney, the city manager. We were told there'd be a worksheet made so that when somebody had a problem, that they would hand it to the homeowner. So like, if we would have had that, it could have said, "You may use your water." But we didn't get that. And then we were told not to use the water by Forbes, by -- oh, I can't think of who it was, but somebody that the city recommended, Andy is his first name. And they told us not to. But then Jeff's like, "Well, no, there was no reason they couldn't use it." Jeff never came down to my basement and seen what was coming in. I'm saying, nobody. We should have been left with something from the city that said, "You can use your water," or "You can't use your water," something. Because so many people came, nobody had the same story. So this is a problem that needs to be addressed. And I agree with Veach's. The taxpayers pay the money. The city cannot always blame it on somebody else. And, "Oh, you have to prove that it's not -- that it's us." And I'm sorry, Forbes has been here in town a long, long time, supported a lot of businesses. And let me tell you, it was a Sunday for us. Man, they were there. They were there. And he said it was the city. And yes, Andy found out later. He had to go down with a camera. And it was the city that had a blockage that was backing everything up. We still paid. And I'm not trying to bring it up again because I told my husband, "It's over." But as soon as I heard that, it's like, "Yeah, this is not right." So that's what I've got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Now we will have a study update on the utility rate sufficiency from -- okay.
So with the large wet weather corrective action program that we completed at the treatment plant, we knew that that was going to be a very large expenditure. The finance director and I had been talking for several years that once that money was borrowed, the project was completed, it would be a perfect time for the community to update the sewer and water rate study. The last one was completed in 2013. So knowing that this was coming up, the city applied for a drinking water asset management grant and received that from the state of Michigan to help us with asset management, help us with getting a handle on the water service lines that we have, the materials that they're made up of. But we also included a component, which is before you tonight, called the rate sufficiency analysis. The same firm that we did -- that did the first one has been contracted to go through and update it and also project, looking forward, what the city rates need to be.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is this a contract that we could have bid out? Did we have found out a bid package to other firms that would do the same work?
Potentially. However, this was subcontracted through Spicer. Spicer has the contract for that DWAM and the asset management. So this is a part of that full package.
I was just curious because I know Wade Trim has done several rate studies like this.
Sure. So a couple of things that are important to understand is, for the past 30, 40 years, the community has spent a tremendous amount on sanitary sewer upgrades. We went through the entire sewer separation. We then did studies to figure out where the excess groundwater and stormwater is coming in. And obviously, we did the wet weather corrective action program, came up with a design for that, spent over $20 million, and successfully completed that project. The next 10 years forecast out some additional sewer upgrades and rehabilitation projects, but nowhere near the magnitude of what we've done in the past 30, 40, even 50 years. Now we're trying to, or we're proposing to, address some of the water needs. There are streets like Fourth Street the entire length. There are sections of Second Street. There's sections of McGill. There are many streets in the community that are not eligible or not practical for just paving the street because of their conditions, because we need to upgrade the utilities below them. So what we've forecasted out in the next 10 years is a lot of water improvements, where we've got undersized mains, where we've got mains that we know we've been having breaks on. We know the condition's poor. There's several sections of McGill and Fourth Street that the water main is just terribly corroded and pitted, and we know we're going to have maintenance problems with that in the future. So that takes up a lot of the future projects that we've projected. There's another one that's the most expensive of all of them. And that is, MDOT is planning to reconstruct US 31 within the entire city limits in 2027. So that creates, I think, an opportunity for us. And the water main north of the river, basically from Memorial Bridge all the way out to the Super 8 Motel, is undersized as far as what current standards are. It's a six-inch. The minimum today would be an eight-inch for a main to meet fire flow protection. But also, from the Super 8 back to Monroe Street, which is where Chapo's is, we have very little control over that section, meaning that there's not a lot of valves in that section, and we don't have any side streets to backfeed it. So when we have to do any type of work or we have any type of issue, we literally have to shut that entire section down. So north of the bridge, to me, is a no-brainer. We need to replace that water main. And the opportunity is when the state of Michigan has it completely torn up, and we can do that work without having to pay for the paving and the street work that's above it. South of the bridge, we have the same type of scenario where we've got a six-inch undersized main down to Ninth Street. But we do have the benefit of having the side streets that tie into it. However, as we tie in those side streets, they're still going to need to get out into the highway and cause some disruption there. So when the consultant is going through this study, you're going to see that there's a very large expenditure that we will likely have to bond for. And I just wanted to give you a little background on what that is. I think this is a once-in-a-40, 50-year timeframe to be able to upgrade the utilities without having to pay for a highway above it. So with that, Jim Bierman with StanTech and Peter are going to walk through the highlights of that rate sufficiency study. And then I'm sure they'll be able to take any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. This is Jim Bierman with StanTech. I have lived my entire life in Michigan. I'm based out of our Ann Arbor office. With me is Peter Napoli. We're obviously both joining you virtually. But we'd like to take you through the results of both the water rate study and the sewer rate study. As Jeff McCula said, the last rate study that was done was back in 2014, and that developed a five-year rate plan, which the city followed. And then during the interim, continued to follow a plan of three-and-a-half percent rate increases and so forth. So what I'd like to do is share with you the methodology and some of the key considerations. Jeff touched on the US 31 system issues and so forth. But with that, just a quick agenda on my end, just kind of a quick recap of the results. RSA to us is revenue sufficiency analysis, meaning how much money does the water utility and the sewer utility need with expected revenues, expenditures, and capital improvement projects on the respective systems? How much money do they need to operate? We'll show you our recommendation for what your existing rate should increase by. We'll show you bill impacts for typical customers. And most importantly, we want to allow time for the council to ask any respective questions that you may have of either myself or Peter. When we talk revenue sufficiency analysis, basically what it is, is a comparison of your existing rate revenues, charges for services, miscellaneous revenues such as interest income, perhaps you have certain penalty fees or late payment charge revenues, and rental income. But the revenues are needed to cover, starting at the 12 o'clock location on the right-hand side of the slide here. It has to recover the operating and maintenance expenses during the forecast period, minor capital outlays, servicing existing debt responsibilities in the respective fund, and also, quite honestly, eliminating existing debt when it reaches the end of its life and it's paid off. Also, any new debt that's typically driven by significant capital improvement projects, the cash funding of capital improvement projects that aren't, you know, those are the cash capital improvement projects, or CIP for short, that Jeff mentioned earlier in his remarks. We'll show you the detail of both the water and the sewer plan. While Peter and I work for an engineering company, we are financial types. We're not engineers. We had a number of discussions and interaction, both with city staff as well as the Spicer Group, to put the plan of capital improvements together in the respective rate studies. And then lastly, contributions to reserve, meaning how many months do you want your operating fund to maintain a minimum balance? It's a common theme for us in all of our studies. Anybody else that does the same type of work we do will also contribute, will also analyze that as well. But collectively, the sum total of all the, you know, symbols to the right form the total revenue requirements. So, simply put, we compare the utility revenues under existing rates to the expected revenue requirements in the future period, year by year. On the water side, again, as Jeff mentioned, you know, there was a -- there's a significant capital plan on the water side that we have factored in. Fiscal year '23 budget was used as our starting point for modeling. And then from that point forward, for subsequent fiscal years, we inflate those expenditures on a line item detail and type of expense by certain escalation factors that we discussed with city staff. And certain of those are obviously our industry experience doing as many studies as we do. Payment of existing water service debt, which goes through the forecast period of 2023, 10-year capital plan, capital improvement plan, again, that's where we were very much involved with city staff and the Spicer Group. In the water side, we assumed use of both cash and debt to fund future capital. And if you recall, I mentioned the level of operating reserves. In this study, we recommend the use of maintaining four months of annual O&M expenditures as the operating reserve target. Typically, we fall between three and six. I tend seldom to utilize three unless the increased operating reserve threshold puts a, you know, significant further rate pressure on a client. We all know what happens, particularly on the water side, when we have a bitter cold winter. This year hasn't fortunately lived up to that, but you get a lot of water main breaks. So, you know, that's one of the considerations. But also, the financial entities that review, you know, kind of the credit rating of the city and so forth, look for a reasonable operating reserve utilized in each study that we do. On the water side, you'll notice really the -- we've highlighted it in red in fiscal year '26 and '27. Jeff also mentioned, I believe, the Washington Street water main improvements in '25 and '26. But you'll see some significant projects as you work to rehabilitate your system, particularly around the US 31 MDOT project. As Jeff said, it makes a lot of sense to time the city's work in the open street while MDOT is doing what they need to do to repave, and then the city doesn't have to repave it. Also, '24 and '25, you'll see amounts in there for hydro excavations and so forth. And you'll see that this carries out for a 10-year period. As I mentioned, Peter and I are financial types. We can solve the model to mitigate rate increases if need be. But the reality is, the timing of the capital projects should be driven based on the expertise of city staff and their engineering consultant. It isn't to say that we didn't go back and forth and move some of these projects around, actually split some of these larger projects into an engineering phase and then a construction. actually split some of these larger projects into an engineering phase and then a construction phase um in an effort to again minimize, to the extent possible, the needed rate increase in the water fund. As I mentioned, the you know, the US thirty one projects are are really driving the rate pressure, major investment in the capital plan versus what you have spent. Um you you did concentrate and the city should be commended for the work you've done on the sewer side to to upgrade that system. Average annual capital spending is in the range of seven hundred and seventy two thousand over the forecasting period, which runs from fiscal year twenty three out through fiscal year twenty thirty three. On the sewer side, um very similar process, um just much more in the way of um significant capital work uh that needed to be done, or I'm sorry, I misspoke, much less capital work on the sewer system because of the previous work that the city and the Spicer Group have done to enhance the reliability of your sewer system. But again, we use the fiscal year twenty three budget. That was our starting point for modeling. Um we inflated each expense item by escalation factors related to, you know, if it's personnel services, for instance, you're looking at, you know, what what is the overall increase expected in um wages and salaries? You know, clearly, we look at healthcare separately because that tends to be a little higher. Obviously, chemicals are an expense that is typically higher than an overall rate of inflation. But you'll notice on the sewer side, um there's just, you know, two and a half million in total through fiscal year twenty twenty thirty three, rather, twenty thirty three. And we've also, because these capital improvement projects were in current day dollars as provided to us, we recognize that the out year projects um certainly could be would be higher in price. So we've assumed the three percent escalation factor on the fiscal year twenty twenty five projects and beyond. It does assume the use of cash to fund all future capital, um no further debt other than your existing sewer debt that um, you know, is sixteen million dollars through fiscal year twenty thirty three. And then lastly, also the maintenance of the four month uh reserve on your your operating fund for annual O and M expenses. On the sewer side, you'll see um there are projects here, but um with the exception of the pump station out in fiscal year twenty nine and thirty, most of the projects tend to be um smaller in dollar value. And then when we get out to fiscal year twenty thirty one, we discussed with city staff and the Spicer Group and saying, you know, that there and you'll see this shortly, there's not a lot of rate pressure on your sewer fund, okay? So do we put a placeholder in um starting in fiscal year twenty thirty one because that's quite a ways out? And recognize that the sewer fund may have the capability to do projects in the out year of the of the forecast that perhaps right now are not identified. As I mentioned, you know, the signif the investment is significantly less than the water side, two hundred and thirty four thousand to seven hundred and seventy thousand, as I recall. So um this is the summary panel, as we refer to it. Uh Jeff and Ed and the Spicer folks and others um saw this a lot. But uh basically, what we're proposing on the water side is a a increase in water rates of seven percent. Please don't jump yet to um conclusions because the water increase, which I'll come to shortly, is much less than that. And um you know, what we've done is we've developed a long term plan of rate increases that will address the future operating expansibles expenses and capital spending plan. And you'll notice that um, you know, that um much of the CIP funding, um other than in twenty six, twenty seven, on the water side is covered by cash, that's the green. It's the right where my cursor is, if you can see my cursor. Because of the magnitude of the US thirty one projects, um it it appears to us, and I think the city would agree, is that certain debt funding will need to occur to cover those projects in twenty six and twenty seven. Okay? Um and it shows you the impact on a on a typical single family bill. Recognize, and we often deal with this, the vast majority of your residents are combination water and sewer customers. So a seven percent increase seems significant on the water side, but I'll share with you momentarily, when coupled with a uh much lower increase on the sewer side, which is the larger percentage of your residence bill, um it does, quite honestly, maintain the three and a half percent overall rate increase that the city has lived with um and the residents have lived with since we did the study in twenty fourteen. It had a couple of early years there in twenty fourteen to kind of catch up. And then after that, it was three and a half percent increases year over year over year until last year, when I believe council decided um to not raise rates last year. Okay? And one of the things too, we look at, it's key to us, the second graph, upper in upper middle revenues very exp versus expenses, we try to, as best we can, mitigate the expenses or cash out exceeding the revenue in. You can't you you can't do it in all the years. But the dotted blue line there is typically the amount of O and M that the system spends. And you'll see a slight increase in it, um mainly for inflationary pressures and so I can get my screen to move forward here. Oh, I guess I got it. Yeah, sorry, I've got to pop these little guys in there. You know, you'll notice in the operating fund, and this was true also on the uh will also be true on the water, the black line represents four months of your annual O and M. Um and that's a target for us to never go below without a good reason. Um but on the water side, it also does show you having a projected borrowing need for the US thirty one projects of approximately four point three million. Now we'll see if I can move forward here. Peter, help. Oh, there we go. Sorry, my computer's stuck for some reason. Must be Saint, it must be Valentine's Day's issues. Um anyways, now this is what we call the summary panel, but it is for the sewer system. And you'll notice um that um whoops, went backwards, sorry.
Yeah, it looks like we lost Jim. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, he can hear you.
All right, well, I can take over until he gets back on. Let me see.
Hmm, I can open.
Yeah, I can share my screen here too. Uh let me let me know if you guys can see my screen.
Yep, we've got it.
Okay. Um so Jim had just gotten to the sewer uh results on our summary panel here, and uh you'll notice that the rate increases recommended on the sewer side are much lower. Those are the the top two rows there. We show for the ready to serve or the fixed rate and the usage rate, uh two and a quarter percentage rate increase over the ten year period works for the sewer rate plan. Uh thi this is our uh recommended long term plan of rate increases. There is no projected borrowing on the sewer side, and that's because the CIP or the capital plan is uh much less significant on the sewer side, uh averaging over a around two hundred thousand rather than seven hundred thousand. So the rates, uh the revenue currently generated by the rates with the two and a quarter percent rate increase would be enough to cash fund that capital plan that we have in the model. Uh it's a balanced cash flow over the ten year period. Uh that's what we're always targeting as a recommendation for our clients. And uh and that basically concludes the summary of the sewer analysis. Um and then so as uh Jim alluded to before, when we look at the recommend recommended rate increases on a combined basis, the two and a quarter percent for the sewer bill results in, and that's that first row there, you'll see the current bill uh estimated at sixty eight dollars and ninety seven cents, and that's for an estimated you monthly usage of six K gallons, six thousand gallons. And uh the increase with the two and a quarter percent results in about an increase of a dollar fifty six to the overall bill. So you're going from sixty eight ninety seven to seventy fifty three. On the water side, that seven percent increase, the the bill is much smaller to begin with on the water side. It's uh estimated at currently twenty four dollars and ninety two cents, and the seven percent increase results in an increase uh on the dollar basis of about a dollar seventy eight to a total bill of twenty six seventy. So the overall impact of the water and sewer recommended increases actually results in a three point five percent overall water and sewer bill increase to customers, your average single family customer. Uh so it's not as bad as it looked when you're looking at the seven percent increases on the water side because the bill is is smaller proportionally to the overall bill. And then we we show the uh the impact to the bill over the ten year period, and you'll see the seven percent increases, they start at a little under uh two dollars overall, and then they climb to about three dollars. The overall impact being in fiscal year twenty thirty three at the conclusion of this ten year rate plan, which you're not committing to at this moment, you're, you know, just um considering next year's rates. But if you were to follow that rate increase plan, the average bill would be forty nine dollars in twenty thirty three, um so about a twenty five dollar increase over current. And then we show the same table on the sewer side, and you'll see um the two and a quarter percent. It's about the same monthly uh change um to the average bill. The two and a quarter percent um is to the 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 seven percent on the water side, so it's a dollar fifty up to two dol around two dollars. Um and you'll see it goes from sixty eight dollars to eighty six dollars at the end, the conclusion of the ten year plan. This chart here gives us a uh a perspective of the increase in Manistee's rates over the uh the the last few years and the increase in the US uh water and sewer CPI, which tracks the actual increase in cost to deliver water and sewer service throughout uh the United States. Um so you'll see you're tracking pretty closely, your rates were increasing at about the same rate as the uh US uh water and. Just finish up the unreal.
While they're trying to get reconnected, these are really tough decisions for for everybody. The the needs of the system are millions and millions of dollars, and everything that we really need to do in the next ten years isn't on this list and isn't included here. We've tried to prioritize what we think the council would approve, what we think the community could accept as rate increases, but in order to fix and maintain that system, you've got to you've got to generate it with cash.
Are you back, Peter?
Did you not hear me?
We've got you back now.
Oh, I'm sorry. How how long was I talking?
Um, it was quite a while. Um we we lost you. Well, we lost you at the summary recommendations, I right after that, or it was at the last slide.
This slide here with the combined bill?
No, no, keep going. No, you were quite a ways past that. We lost you.
Oh.
Um keep going, next slide. Um one more. That's where we lost the rates perspect, right? Is that where we were? That's where we were, right there.
Oh, I'm sorry, guys. Yeah, I had no idea. Um uh so basically, thi this uh this table here, and we're about at the end, um we only have like one slide left. So this table here just shows how Manistee's water and sewer rates um track compared to the water and sewer CPI, which is an index that actually tracks the increase in cost uh throughout the country to provide water and sewer. So that is a a overall throughout the country, utilities face uh increases in their cost to provide service uh that average around four to five percent. So the the actual rate increase that Manistee experiences is consistent with that water and sewer CPI and actually, beginning in twenty three onwards, the overall increase is lower than the o uh projected increase in water and sewer CPI. So uh it just gives you some some confidence that um other communities are also facing the same pressure and uh inflationary pressures on their utilities that result in necessary rate increases.
I think Jim's probably been talking this whole time.
Huh?
Jim was probably talking this whole time and didn't realize he was cut off.
Yeah, it probably was.
Yeah, I I I'm sorry, I I got to the point of asking if you were any questions, and then it was um deathly silent. Um I know my presentation wasn't that um pronounced here. Um did you, did you, did we lose you at some point through?
Jim, I wrapped it up. I I I took it, I I jumped in when you when you dropped off and I just finished it up.
Okay, super. Well, thanks for uh, you know, the wonders of tech, wonders of technology. Next time, I will visit your beautiful city and do it in person.
This is why we uh we have backups. All right, so yeah, that's it. We're uh turning back over to you guys for questions.
Yeah, yeah, just as we close, I I just want to say, I, you know, I appreciate the help from from Ed and Jeff and other city staff, um as well as the Spicer Group folks and being able to to work through this process with you. And uh I wish you uh on Peter's behalf as well, um wish you all a good night and good luck with your deliberation on 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 our recommendations.
Uh can you stand for questioning?
I can, yes.
Thank you.
Peter, you didn't answer all the questions, so I could get away easy tonight?
Not yet, no, that I'll leave that to you.
Any questions?
I have a question. So one of the things that commonly comes up around among residents, um on your bill, where it gives the ready to serve charges, where does that money?
So the ready to serve started with when the last rate study was completed. And essentially, um what was recommended, and if you remember, they talked about maintaining this the four months of cash. So right now, we're probably pumping about a million gallons a day, maybe less than that, in water. We can get up to three million and even higher during the summer, during the peak seasons. So we obviously have more visitors here. So we obviously have more visitors here, we have more users, we have a lot of seasonal homes. So that creates an imbalance of when the cash is flowing through, when our revenues are coming in. But the operating expenses are pretty flat. So one of the recommendations from Stan Tech last time was creating a ready-to-serve charge that every customer pays on a monthly basis. That allows the city to cover its operating expenses year-round. And then when the usage goes up, then it covers some of those, um, some of the, when I say the operating expenses, I mean more of the fixed costs. And then some of the other costs like, that are more variable, like the chemical additives that we use, um, electricity, those type of things. Then as the, the revenue follows the consumption, then we've got the money to, to cover that, and then also the debt service.
So that money doesn't necessarily go aside to work on sewer repairs, like?
All the revenues go into, all the revenues go in both the consumption, the ready-to-serve, um, the-
There's not two pots of money, is what you're saying?
No, there's not. No, there's one for water, one for sewer.
So I think when I'm hearing questions from the public, they're assuming their ready-to-serve charges are being put in a separate account to maintenance and do those larger repairs versus offset those monthly expenditures. So I guess my question is, you know, thinking back when I first purchased my home and my water bill for a single person was under $20 a month. Now I'm paying 60 to 80 to maybe even 100, like the previous, um, person from the city that came and spoke. I guess I'm just wondering, what can we do to offset that cost? I, I think the community was appreciative of council last year finding a resource so that they didn't have to increase that. And I understand their, you know, costs go up, so that's not always a possibility. But when we're talking about affordable housing and we're talking about resources and making sure that things are affordable to people, when we look at the long term and you're taking a bill that was gonna be 25 and it's almost $50, that's doubled. So those increases for people that are on fixed incomes is kind of concerning when you think about it long-term. Do you know what I mean?
I do. And that's what I was trying to say is, it's a very tough balancing act, is what the system needs are versus how much you can pay. The, the one thing that is a positive thing on the water and sewer side is, as you anticipate projects, as you anticipate capital improvements and expenditures, you have the ability to adjust your rates to cover that. We were able to start adjusting the rates in 2014 and do it pretty consistently. And when we had that, that $20 million project last year, we didn't have to raise rates to pay for that. The, the cash had been built up, the revenue stream had been built up to do that. On our streets, we have the same high needs, everybody knows, we, we need millions of dollars for our streets. We don't have that ability. We, we've got, over 90% of that is, is straight ta- or revenue coming from the state of Michigan through Act 51 that's supposed to maintain and provide the street upgrade, upgrades. So both in the water side, sewer side, we're looking, we're always looking at low-interest loans. Um, Ed does a phenomenal job managing the finances of that, so our bond rating is extremely high, A-plus, I believe. And there's not a whole lot of grants, but we've been pretty successful. And when we find grants, we try to, you know, grab a hold of those. I've addressed you many times before, we're always looking to leverage development projects to offset those. But, um, but there's a lot of very expensive needs of the system.
So one of the questions I was gonna ask, um, of Ms. Davis, and I understand she couldn't be here tonight, but I guess I wonder if that might be a useful piece of data to look at, is, you know, we've given out lots of tax abatements lately, it seems like, which I understand there's a need to bring businesses here, and there has to be incentives, so I'm not opposed to that by any means. But I guess I'm just wondering, what is the potential lost tax revenue that the city is foregoing on those tax abatements that could be used to offset other costs? Is there a way we could get that data as a council?
Yeah, that, there's, some of that's already in the audit, that's a required footnote disclosure. So if you look in the back of the audit and the footnotes, and I can get you the footnote reference.
Well, or is there a way we could put it together in a one-page thing so we could see?
It is, it is, it is on one page, but we can, we can do something else that might be informative. But I don't wanna, I don't want council to confuse tax rates with the water and sewer study, which is what we're here to talk about. A couple of things Jeff mentioned, I just wanna clarify, the ready-to-serve charge, we had a, a charge that was euphemistically called bond debt, and it was set at $6.60 for years. It had no direct correlation to bond debt whatsoever, because we took on millions and millions of dollars of debt for the sewer separation projects. When we did the rate study with Stan Tech, the industry standard is to have a ready-to-serve charge twice as much as what we have now in terms of a percentage of your bill. And council at the time didn't wanna, uh, burden some of the maybe lower-income or fixed-income people that maybe weren't using as much water, and so there was a compromise to set that lower. But many utilities have a ready-to-serve charge that's a larger component of the rate structure. Keep in mind, the rate structure is comprised of those two things, but it's all needed to meet the revenue sufficiency requirements of the utility. So there's no, there's no lockbox, there's no separate pot of money for those, it's all just the revenues of the system. And the other thing that you mentioned was, nobody likes to have inflationary increases. But by having an annual increase that's reasonable, 3.5% less than what the CPI is across the country, it prevents us from going flat for five years and then having to have a 20% rate increase. So that annual inflationary increase has worked, and it's allowed us to manage the system to do the needed capital projects. Part of the planning for the sewer separation project was, we had a whole bunch of debt back in, uh, '99, 2000, 2001, that was 20 years. But when that debt fell off, we were able to service the new $24 million debt for the Wet Weather Corrective Action Program, and we didn't have to adjust rates because of that. And again, that's because of planning and forethought. Now that that is in place, the, the revenues in the sewer fund are sufficient to pay that debt service, so we didn't have to do a special rate increase for that. And now we have fewer capital projects, all the separation has been done, we've, we've done the corrective action program, we can lower that rate down, and it's 3/4 of your bill. So when you have only a 2 and a quarter percent, which really doesn't even keep up with inflation on 3/4 of your bill, it allows you to have a little higher percentage on the water and still hit that 3.5%. And the community has been very accepting of 3.5%. Absent those rate increases, you're not gonna be able to do the capital projects. And so many of those capital projects on the water side are mandated. US 31 isn't mandated, but all the lead service line and the hydro excavations and all that stuff is mandated. So sewer, water and sewer utilities, water utilities in particular across the state are having the exact same situation. I think we're fortunate that we've already done the big investment on the sewer side, so now we can focus on the water and still keep rates within that 3.5%. So I think that's really, really important to point out. We are gonna have to incur some debt, we just can't cash fund that, but we'll, we'll try to minimize that, and we've been able to take advantage of low-interest loans through the state revolving fund and on the sewer side through rural development. Um, but if we don't have those revenues to, to do those projects, then, um, at some point, the ones that are mandatory are gonna come up and you'll be forced to do them. The other thing to keep in mind is, a lot of the money, when we're digging up streets, you know, there's a, they gotta do a pipe and I have to have a trench, right? Well, the water and sewer utility, and you can talk much more, I'll talk a little bit about this, it pays for that. I mean, that, if I was just replacing the, the, the water main and I wasn't gonna redo the streets, it pays for a portion of that. Well, by leveraging those dollars, when we do those replacements with the street dollars, we can repave the whole street. If we don't have money in the water and sewer utility to do those repairs, um, then we're not gonna be able to do as much leveraging and the streets just simply aren't gonna get done. Or you're gonna end up with, uh, a trench that's resurfaced in the middle of your road and nobody wants that. So we have to marry those projects up to, to try to make that make sense. So just a couple of takeaways.
I got a question. The, um, the mandated work that needs to be done, if we did not raise the rates, we didn't have the money to do that, where would that money come from?
Um, you're required by law for a water and sewer utility to raise sufficient revenue to main- maintain and operate your system and service your debt. So at some point, you're gonna have to raise those rates. There's an argument to be made that you could take taxpayer dollar and put that into the water and sewer utility, but that's not a recommended practice by any means. That utility is supposed to operate like a business and fund itself.
Okay.
I have a question. Does everybody who gets a water bill have the ready to s- ready-to-serve charge on it?
Yes.
Every single user?
As far as I know, there may be some outliers, but I think everything gets a ready-to-serve charge.
The only time it doesn't is if the meter is pulled from the house.
Yeah. And remember, we don't charge ready-to-service, ready-to-serve charges on sprinkling meters. That was recommended by the rate consultants, council chose not to do that. That costs probably $40,000 a year in revenue that we've forgone. But with the ad, with the inflationary increases and, and being able to manage the utility, we've been able to absorb that, that revenue loss.
So if there's anybody, if no one lives in a house, they still are getting billed ready-to-serve?
As long as the house is ready to be served and has a meter in it, then they get charged that, that monthly, uh, fee, whether or not there's consumption. So normally, if somebody, for whatever reason, um, is gonna leave their house and be gone for a year, they will call and we will, we will come over, remove the meter, and then inform the billing department, and they will not receive that billing.
But you're still billing them in wintertime for ready-to-serve?
If their meter is in place, yes.
Above for outside though, with, on that meter, because a lot of people have separate meters.
There is no, yeah, there is no ready-to-serve on the irrigation meter. It's just, just on the potable water for the house.
But didn't you tell me a couple of years ago, when we were talking about the same thing, that when you have money in the water fund, if you have a sewage project, you can change the money over without even telling us? I remember that exactly.
Well, let me, let me, let me elaborate on that for a minute, because it's kind of complicated. We have bond debt covenants for some of the bonds that we've taken out in the past that require our water and sewer utility to be operated as what they call a combined system. So the revenues from both the water and the sewer have to be available for whatever, if needed. We haven't managed it like that with a few exceptions, you know, many years ago. We've tried to manage it so that the water and sewer utility are kind of standalone, as, as most places are. And absent those bond debt covenants, that is how we would manage it. Once we took on this rural development loan, they required that we break out the water and sewer revenues more specifically. We, we've always done it internally, but it hadn't been reflected that way in the audit. So now basically, we're, we're operating the water utility as a standalone utility, we're operating the sewer utility as a standalone utility, their rates, sewer rates have to support the sewer, water rates have to support the water. That's what the, the rate sufficiency analysis reflect, and that's why you see a differential in those rates. If push came to shove, if something catastrophic happened, if, say, the Oaks Prison closed and we had to service a bunch of sewer debt, I might have to take money from the water utility to help service that debt until we could adjust the rates to get that to flow through. That's required by our bond debt covenants. We don't anticipate that ever happening. So we don't freely move money back and forth between the water and sewer utilities. They're, they're kind of separate, because that's how they're, they're managed and that's how they need to operate. But because of those bond debt covenants, in a catastrophic situation, we would have to potentially look at doing that. So that's a long answer to your question, but I hope it explains it.
The thing is, what I couldn't understand back then, I still don't know, is why do you just move it and you don't tell us about it?
We've not done that. And if we did it today, it would require our budget amendment.
When I asked that question back years ago, that was the answer, we can do it.
I think, well, I di- I didn't make that response to your question. What I'm telling you today is, is if we had to move money from one of the utilities to the other that wasn't already in the budget, we would have to do a budget amendment, and that would have to come to council.
Anybody else? Thank you. Now we will have an update on the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts, Mr. Bill Hatendorf.
Yes, yes. I'm Bill Hatendorf, the, uh, president of the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. I live in Onakama at 9241 Lakeside. Uh, thank you for having us, Madam Mayor and council members. Ginny Pelton is gonna start off here for a minute.
Ginny Pelton, 329 First App, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, um, city manager and city staff. Thank you for having the RRCA board of directors here to report. And thank you for the more exciting Valentine's Days I've had in a long time. Is that water and sewer stuff, take it home with you. Okay, tonight, we have five of our directors, uh, with us and our new interim manager. And, um, we just wanna say that we are honored to have the responsibility to manage this historic gem in the city of Manistee. We also appreciate that once a year, the city contribution from the city's annual budget goes toward the utilities to keep the building usable for all the events that happen in the building. We are excited with all that is coming up in the months ahead at the Ramsdale. We are currently in the interview process of a new executive director. We are thrilled with the number of local and out-of-area applicants, we've had 15. Interviews start tomorrow morning. And, uh, again, I thank you for your support in keeping the Ramsdale alive for the citizens of Manistee and the surrounding areas. And now I would like to turn it over to our new chair of the RRCA board, Bill Hatendorf.
Good evening. Um, I can update you on our programming and a few other things, but I'm fairly curious on, uh, if you have any questions right away for me?
No, I'm thrilled to hear that, uh, we've got so many applicants.
Yes, it's a-
It's exciting, sorry.
You're fine. Um, well, I have questions. Um, I got quite a few questions. I don't know if you wanna start, and maybe you can answer some of these, or?
Uh, I, um, what I prepared is a little introduction about what we're doing currently, uh, our mission and our vision. We are entering the 120th year celebrating the Ramsdale Theater. We are proud to the, for the collaboration between the city and the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts for the last many decades, uh, five or six years for the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. But the city and the Ramsdale, uh, management team have been working together for a long time. And we're, uh, very excited moving forward into the 2023 season. We'd like to, uh, uh, tell you about, uh, the current activities of the board. We are looking for a managing director and a fundraising development director. Uh, we are reorganizing the RRCA management structure slightly by splitting the executive director's job into two, two positions. Uh, one is a fundraiser and development director, and one is an operational management director to take care of the operations and the programming at the RRCA at the building. Uh, we have six board members, four of them are from the original, uh, reorganization from six or seven years ago. And we have two dynamic new ladies on the board, Ginny Pelton and Roz Jaffe. We are currently scheduling interviews for managing director, and we have 15 applicants. An update to our calendar, this is our 120th anniversary, so that's gonna be a big splash throughout our entire calendar. Uh, the gala, we'll be focusing on that. Uh, we have a special, um, uh, exhibition in Hardy Hall during December of 2023. It's gonna, uh, utilize the Manistee Art Institute's permanent collection, which has some Ramsdale, uh, art pieces from, um, Frederick Ramsdale and a, a bunch of very historic paintings that were done in Manistee, which will be on display, as well as a lot of history will be presented at that time. Um, we have, uh, uh, the Journey of Discovery, which is the African-American, uh, exhibit right now. We have many events going on. We just had a, uh, presentation of a Smithsonian document, a documentary, uh, last Saturday. A big crowd came out for that. We had a reception for our art, uh, show, uh, two weeks ago. We had one of the largest attendance for any reception we've had in six or seven years. So it was a, a great success. We are collaborating with March D, um, on that, uh, and the, uh, Community Foundation for that, uh, set of events. We also have a bunch of things coming to the gallery. We have some, um, tribute bands coming, we have, uh, Tom Petty Tribute Band. Let me put my page here. Um, Aneel Diamond Legacy, Kenny Rogers, uh, The Gambler Returns, Allman Brothers Revival, and, uh, our most popular, uh, request for, uh, tribute band is the Tom Petty. It's The Insiders with the music of Tom Petty, it's coming back this summer. We're looking forward to that. The MCP is, uh, got a, uh, schedule for this year. They start in April with Bad Year for Tomatoes, and we have Conservatory of Dance and The Nutcracker coming in the fall. And we have several, um, weddings planned that are under contract right now that we're working on. And, uh, so our, uh, the collaborations, March D, Community Foundation, West Shore Community College, the Manistee Civic Players, Manistee Art Institute, of course, and the City of Manistee. So we're very proud of those collaborations. And, um, so that's kind of an update of what our programming is and where we're at today. There we are. So you have questions?
I do, does anyone?
Yeah, I, I do have a question. Um, so you have somebody for this fundraising director's position right now?
No, we don't, we're searching.
Oh, that's the one that you've got the 15 applicants for?
No, that is for the managing, uh, operational director.
So have you advertised for the fundraising person?
We are just beginning that process right now.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. I thought maybe you might have had one of them placed, but I-
No, we're, we're working on it.
Okay.
We have a signed contract with the Ramsdale for 2023?
Do we have a signed contract?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
So I, I'm glad that you've got, you know, good board members now. Um, I was a little concerned that your board president just stepped away when you guys needed somebody the most. So, um, hopefully the new board members have, or can be of value. Um, I have some questions about the lease agreement. Uh, on one of these, it says the city shall have the right to appoint at least one voting member of the RRCA board to serve as city representative. Who is that?
That's Ed Bradford.
Okay. Does it never change?
It hasn't. I'm the board treasurer for the RR-
It hasn't, I'm the board treasurer for the RRCA and because the city does the back office financials, it's just made sense to do that.
Okay. That brings me to my next question. The, so we have an in-kind service that we do the bill, the pay, payouts and accounts receivable. That seems to be a huge expense that I don't think is getting, you know, rightly, it, it's just weird to me that that's an in-kind service because that's a lot of money. Like it's what, thirty, forty thousand dollars for an accountant to do that, so?
So I can address that a little bit, just a little history. The city, for a long time leased the facility to the Manistee Civic Players and sent over a little bit of money and the civic players ran it. And they got to the point where it was becoming too much of a burden to manage. There was huge capital expenditures that needed to happen over there. And again, it's a city-owned facility. So the city made some significant investments in the Ramsdale. They put the roof on it for about five hundred thousand. They invested in the HVAC system for about one and a quarter. Since that time, you know, over the years of leveraging grants and stuff, there's probably been, you know, maybe three to four hundred thousand additional of capital expenditures. But the civic players decided that they couldn't really manage the building anymore. The city council at the time created an ordinance and created the Ramsdale Governing Authority. And that was when the city actually ran the building and it ran out of our Heather's office for about three and a half years. That's when we had hired Mike Terry, there was a Ramsdale Governing Authority Board appointed. And at that time, the city, because we were running it, we did all the books and records for the Ramsdale Theater, did everything for it. Then that model really wasn't working because we got tenants on the board and it was kind of out of a conflict of interest. It really wasn't workable and the board wasn't making the progress that anybody wanted. So a concerned group of citizens and Ramsdale supporters approached the city and said, we would like to lease the building, take the responsibility of managing it, the city. Use the same nonprofit that did the restoration project. So the Ramsdale Theater Restoration Project with the original five oh one C three and it is more, took a new name, Friends of the Ramsdale. And right now it's still the Friends of the Ramsdale and it does business as the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts and the Ramsdale Theater. Those are its two doing business as names. So that board, at the time that approached city council, there needed to be an agreement for that. And one of the things that made a lot of sense in a lot of people's eyes at the time was to just let the city continue to do that because it's our facility, we need to kind of keep an eye on it. So that was the genesis of that agreement. And it is a little bit of extra work, but Heather, who does the accounts payable, is processing bills anyway. So there's Ramsdale Theater bills. The revenue for the most part is handled over at the theater itself and it just kind of comes to the city as a, as a package and we deposit it, make sure it gets in the right accounts. And then we do the, you know, the financial statements for the Ramsdale. And the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts has to be a part of the city audit because it's considered a component unit. So if we had a different accounting firm doing that, it would be subject to different audit principles and costs and it would raise that cost. So this way it's very economical. So there is a, there is a cost from in-service things for our department. Mark Hanson also spends a lot of time over there as the city facility manager, but again, it's our facility.
I, I am, I'm so clear that the building, like for, whatever, like I get it.
So that's part of the reason that that agreement.
But so why isn't our accountant doing the, why is the city clerk doing the accounts and the, that, why isn't the accountant?
Because I do the accounts payable. Because I, that's what I do, I handle the accounts payable for the city, so I do the accounts payable for the Ramsdale.
Okay, so my next question is then, because this is so outdated, because it says we do seventy thousand, up to seventy thousand dollars well, anticipates a seventy thousand dollar appropriation. And then it says that the city has the use of the Ramsdale for meetings and events from time to time at no charge. But then, then we, in twenty twenty, the previous city manager signed an agreement to pay for, like, I don't get it. Like this whole contract is one-sided geared towards the regional arts center of it. So I just, I have some issues with quite a few things in this lease agreement that I think we need to go over and revamp since it hasn't been done since two thousand fourteen. Like it, it just.
We paid six hundred and twenty-five dollars a month?
Yes, so we paid six hundred and twenty-five dollars, but yet where's the in-kind service on our side? You know what I mean?
So I can address that a little bit. So when COVID hit and we couldn't have meetings in here, the previous city manager and the executive director at the time Xavier discussed that and because they needed sound tech and light for those meetings, which wouldn't have been anticipated under the original contract, that's what they agreed on to help reimburse the RRCA because they had, we had to pay for sound technicians and light technicians when they were holding the meetings in the theater. And that only happened for six months maybe, nine months, I can't remember.
It was like a total of less than a dozen times for us to have a meeting there, so.
Between council meetings and work sessions, yes.
But we're, we're paying the utilities on top of that. So you see where I'm confused on why we'd be charged to use the building when we're paying for?
I wasn't part of those discussions, but my understanding was that was to help offset the additional staff time that had to be there to run the Ramsdale lights that we don't have to do here with the city staff. That, that's not, we're not doing that anymore, we're not meeting over there. If the city council wanted to have a reception at Hardy Hall, then we would accommodate that and there would be no charge. That's, that's was contemplated under that reasonable use provision in the contract.
Okay.
So we're paying the six twenty-five anymore?
No, we haven't paid that for a long time. That was all COVID related.
Well, I unders- I, I understand that and I understand because of COVID, but we still paid the utilities. So I just, why would we pay to, okay, whatever. I just think that we need to redo this lease agreement that's almost ten years old and update a few things because it seems to be all one-sided geared towards the art center. And I feel like there should be a, I know, I understand that you're the treasurer, but I feel like there should be something, somebody else because now you're two roles there. You're the city representative and you're the treasurer, so I think it needs to be separated.
Yeah, and that's certainly council's prerogative, but there is a, there is a notice clause in there that we'd have to look at to see how that would work, but.
Yeah, we need to look at the whole contract over again because it's, it's old. So that's all the questions that I have. I'm extremely happy for you. I hope that you guys do amazing work and have a ton of events and make a ton of money. And I'm happy to see that there's new people on the board. I just have concerns with the lease agreement. Anybody else?
I just wanted to personally thank Bill. I'm really excited that Roz is on your board now and the rest of your committee. You guys do amazing work with our community, especially our schools. Oneakama has benefited greatly from that and I know other districts have as well. So I really appreciate that. I know our kids appreciate it, it's a real asset to the city. So if there's any way that we can support you guys, just reach out anytime and just let us know what we can do for you. Personally, as a council member, I'd be interested in looking at that representative piece, not because I think there's anything going on that shouldn't be going on with that. I just think it might be helpful to have a representative from city council sit on that just so we have a better understanding of what you guys are doing and how we can support you on a city level. So, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else?
I echo that, so grateful for a very active committee. I think the Ramsdale is an absolute jewel in our town and I fully support whatever you guys, whatever we can do to help support you guys.
Thank you.
I just want to know when tickets are going to go on, Tom Petty?
Contact signing next week. It's going to go on the legislature right now.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now discussion on cities, the sidewalk ordinance. Mr. McCula or Mr. Gamble?
So I think we'll.
Which one do you want first?
So as the city attorney sent out kind of a memo on snow removal, his opinion, I think there was, yeah, there's definitely not, the current ordinance does not require residents, individual property owners to clear sidewalks or adjacent. I think there's some confusion about the central business district area, which does have some, you know, require the property owners to, to remove it. But then we also have an agreement that the DPW removes snow there. So I just wanted Mr. McCula to kind of talk about the status quo and how that's kind of currently working and then kind of discuss ordinances, if we want to make a change, what, what we should consider and kind of next steps with that.
Yeah, I, I know I've explained this a little bit before, but briefly, as far as snow removal, the city, there's a provision in the DDA's city manistee agreement that the city will do snow removal from the sidewalks within the downtown and then not only remove it, but haul it away and we place it down at First Street Beach. So we generally do that on every snow event and then we also apply salt to those sidewalks. The balance of the city, we've got two pieces of equipment that are capable of snow blowing sidewalk, or snow from the sidewalks. Normally those are deployed once we are completed with all the street plowing and the downtown is cleared and all the other winter activities, you know, parking lots are completed, then we will start those snow blowers out and they concentrate on the major streets and then around the school districts. And then if time allows and we don't have another snow event, then they start spreading out into other areas in the community. Every time we have another snow event, that resets and then they've got to go back to starting over, going to get the, the routes along the majors. And we, we use the routes to get to the schools, clean, try to clean around the schools and then come back out. Is there anything more you need on that?
I guess how long have we been doing it with those two pieces of equipment around schools and neighborhoods?
I remember when I was a kid, the city had little bombardiers with a V plow on them and I remember them zipping by the house, so I'm only thirty years old. So I know that the, the city's been plowing sidewalks for at least forty years. We did try to buy a V plow this year and tried to, our intention was to, to try that to make it faster so that we could get more done. We did have one of our plows that we used downtown and did try it when we had mechanical issues with one of the snow blowers. And what we found is, we got calls from residents that said, I just shoveled my driveway. That thing came zipping by and it put two windows of snow in across my driveway. The snow blower, you're able to direct the snow off to the side. When they get to a driveway, they can put it in front of them, kind of walk along until they get past the driveway and put it out. So once that happened, I didn't put that out there. And then obviously there's, the standard size of a sidewalk is sixty inches, it's five foot wide. The equipment that we have is less than that, but not less by very much. And not every sidewalk in the city is that, that five foot wide, as Mr. Pratt pointed out. But probably more importantly is a lot of the sod grows into those sidewalks and it can do three, four inches on either side. So as soon as you get that steel going down the sidewalk, it's going to grab dirt with it and it kind of edges it on its own. And then oftentimes we have sidewalks that are not parallel, they do have jogs. One of the, the biggest challenges is for the guys is up by Manistee High School on Twelve Street. Those sidewalks curve to meet the, the driveway access points, then they curve back. And so they oftentimes miss those and, and will create what we call scalping, where they get some, some turf and some sod. Normally when that happens, if the guys notice it, we put it on a list. If a resident calls, we put it on a list and we go back in the spring, rake it up, seed it, add topsoil. But that's the current operation.
I think there are, we've had discussions about process improvement, maybe staking where those jogs are, if we're going to continue this process. So other communities I've worked in, as Ms. Lasky mentioned, there's, I've worked in a lot of communities where we do have enforcement about property owners, you know, shoveling their sidewalks. So a lot of places it's, you know, it's complaint driven, but there's also active enforcement. And there's a big story about, a place I used to work, St. Clair Chores, where one Christmas before, they were getting very aggressive about if the property owner didn't clear it, then the city would do it and charge them. And I think we get into issues of notice too, where if they're not notified, they thought their neighbor did it, they get a bill of a hundred fifty dollars. And I think there was probably a hundred people who came to city hall, ticked off about it. So I just think it's, if we're going to go that route, there's just considerations about enforcement. Who's going to issue the warnings, then we're going to issue tickets eventually. And if the people don't comply, are we, how are we going to deal with that? So just something to think about. I do have a meeting with Safe Build about additional services, if they want to do, you know, dangerous buildings or some other things that we need. So this is something we can discuss if, if council wants to go this route. But we would need kind of a more aggressive ordinance allowing us to make that there. You know, something we enforce and make sure that people, you know, shovel their sidewalks. So I see it kind of, we can continue to try to improve the process with those machines or does council want to more abandon that and go to more of individual property owners should be shoveling their sidewalk?
Can we ask some questions?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, well, I guess I'm going to echo what Ms. Lasky said. I've specifically asked about that ordinance and was led to believe it was different than the way the ordinance was actually written and written. So my question is, I kind of view that as an added perk for residents, to be honest with you. I mean, we're paying tax dollars and that's a perk for the taxes that we pay, that the city's going to come around and do those sidewalks. But I'll be honest, I can probably count on two hands the number of times I've seen that done in the past couple of years. And I have some real concerns about the way those sidewalks are done around the schools. So we talk about the DDA and their sidewalks and the removal and hauling away that snow. And I guess when we talk about the business district, can we clarify, does that include Division Street or is it just River Street? Because the way the ordinance is ran, it should include Division, I believe. And we're not doing Division right now. So that's a concern. And those business owners are paying taxes just like anybody else. And they're paying business taxes and they should be getting that service. So I have a real issue with that. I also feel like we can't change an ordinance without notifying and giving proper notice to people. We have a lot of elderly people, we have a lot of people that might have a physical disability that prevent them from shoveling their snow. So I think this is a real slap in the face to change it on residents at this point. Because I can guarantee you, if we asked residents, they wouldn't know that this was a perk that was provided to them.
I do have an issue with the way the sidewalks are handled. I get calls regularly when we get a heavy snowfall and they're generally from people that are older and they feel obligated to shovel their sidewalks because they, they're under the impression that they're responsible for shoveling their sidewalks. And then they see others, other people that are in like neighborhoods who are, the city's doing them. So there, there doesn't seem to be a lot of consistency about moving through the city and actually doing all the sidewalks, sidewalks. So I am concerned more about people's perception that it's not equal to everybody in the city. So, I mean, we're either going to do all the sidewalks or come up with some other, some, some other way to handle it. But that's, that's the problem I face and I face this problem. I had this discussion with many residents over the last almost eight years, so that's.
Personally, that's, that's how I feel is, is you either have to be all in or all out. And, and for a long time, we've been partially in.
Yep.
And so then that creates the confusion, it creates what, what is being done. So we would have to, in order to do all of them and do it consistently, we would have to put crews that, that just keep going with that and not pull them off to plow, not pull them off to, to do other winter, winter things.
And I recognize.
And right now we don't have the staff to do that. But I think if we, if the obligation was of the city and the expectation was that we were clearing citywide, then we would have to put more resources to that.
And I recognize that too, so we have to be careful here.
Like by my house, they create an ordinance that they got to shovel, who's going to shovel from my property going to thirty-one? You know, I don't think the school's going to do that.
And Jeff, I think you mentioned it was, yeah, from the schools, they can expand out and do what they can in the amount of time. But I was kind of surprised with the one complaint you had, Mr. Pratt, was that, Councilman Pratt, is that they went out that particular road where it doesn't connect anywhere, but it's just kind of near the school in that area. So you kind of, as time permits and as resources, that's, they expand out. But then eventually if the snow melts or, then it's kind of concluded for that round.
Right.
So I'm not, I'm not trying to make this a sticking point, but I guess what I'm saying is, you know, having known many business owners over the years that have cleared their own sidewalks and removed their own snow, why are we putting the business district in front of the school? I, I mean, there's kids, there's parents on their way to work to do drop off. I mean, I don't know why we're taking money from the DDA, which is essentially taxpayer money to some degree, and we're putting that in front of the school.
I think you do the downtown from four o'clock or something, you guys come out, used to be that years ago.
Yeah, essentially it's, there's, there's two components to that and one. And one of them is, on River Street, there's no place to put the snow. You've got sidewalk right from the building to the curb and gutter. So even if you shovel the small path in front of your house, you'd have to put it along the curb line, and then people can't open up their doors. And so I've advocated for a long time that we're very efficient. When we start at four o'clock in the morning, we plow the snow off the sidewalk, put it in the street, we windrow it, and we haul it away. The second component to that is the timing, which I think you're asking. And if we don't get downtown to be able to haul the snow before the businesses open, then we can't do it. We just can't get all that equipment down there once people start coming to the restaurants and the coffee shops and stuff. And we've had to adjust that over, over the years because the downtown is open more. The Vogue Theater, since it reopened, has brought a lot more people in the evenings and on the weekends. So as a, having, having the staff that we have, we, we clear the downtown first before the stores open. But that doesn't mean that the, the sidewalks are, are out even before school starts. And it depends on if we're running a second shift or not as well.
So if we're going to continue with the downtown area, which it sounds like we are, are we going to expand that to include the whole business district? Or end of Division?
I, I think the term that we use, if you remember, I don't, I haven't looked at that agreement.
Because I'll be honest, some business owners feel just a little slighted on that Division Street.
I know that, I know that that's one of the major streets that we clear, but I don't remember if we include that in what we term the enhanced snow removal or not. I wrote a note. I'll check on that.
What you enhance is that plow the sidewalks?
The enhance is completely clearing it and then hauling it away.
And you haul it all down to River Street.
Right, and then we haul it down to the beach.
I really, in my heart, cannot get behind ticketing homeowners. We have a large majority of them that are either absent because there's snowbirds or, and we have a lot of people who are here year-round that are out there and they are struggling, and they just don't have the energy or the strength to do their sidewalks. I can't do that. I can't give them a ticket. I'm sorry. I just can't. This, that's my opinion. So I would not be in favor of that at all.
I agree with that. I think we have to be considerate too. There are people that have job obligations, so they're leaving early in the morning. You may not have the opportunity to shovel your sidewalk before you leave to work, but a lot of people shovel it after they get back from work. So I feel like this is going to be a disastrous situation to figure out, was somebody being negligent? Or was somebody, they had a five o'clock morning meeting and they couldn't shovel it before they went? I mean, and who's going to do that? Because I, I can be honest with you. I mean, I don't think we can ask the city police to do that. They have too much on their plate already, and that's going to be a nightmare.
I would have to agree. I mean, I, personally, I do mine. I'm a mom. I do my dad's.
That's all right.
And I have a full-time job, so by the time I do mine, I barely have enough time to do my father's. So ticketing people that either don't have enough time or are too old. It's, it's wrong to ticket.
Yeah, I don't think we're advocating either way. It, it's just a discussion and what the council believes the community desires is, you know, is what the outcome should be.
Well, that's why you're getting the comments, because we're having a discussion.
Right.
And our opinions.
I mean, I don't think anybody in the community, if I go out and ask them, and I said, "Would you be opposed to the city? Plowing your sidewalk?" is going to tell me, "No, please don't have them do that."
Right.
I mean, they might hope that we do it with the right piece of equipment, so we're not digging up their dirt and their lawn, but they're not going to be like, "Oh, no, I want to shovel my own sidewalk." I mean, I can tell you, if you want to shovel my sidewalk anytime, please do.
I, I'm just confused on what we want here. Do we want him to figure out how to plow or snow plow every sidewalk in the city? Or we want to have homeowners do it, or? I'm confused.
I think it goes back to, we have an ordinance, but we're not implementing the ordinance the way it's written. So that leads to confusion, and people have asked questions, but they've been given a different answer than the way the ordinance is written. So maybe we don't change it, but maybe it's an educational opportunity for city personnel to understand what the ordinance actually states. Because I think, as Ms. Lasky said, and I can agree, sitting on the side of the, the bench, when she spoke, I mean, it, it was a little aggressive, the response she received about the fact that she didn't understand the way that ordinance was written. And then when she went back and looked at the ordinance, she completely understood, but it was different than what she was told by city personnel at a public meeting, and that's recorded.
I think we need to come up with how we can make the system better on getting the sidewalks cleared.
Yep.
And then not always start out at the same place every time. Because I know in my district, it's very rare to have the sidewalks cleared.
Yeah.
I agree.
And then to figure out, so we're not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other, Mr. Gamble, do you have?
Just a heads up to council, I'll give some more information and update. But we did get the easements from the two property owners off of Harbor Drive. They signed them and provided us with the water main to complete loop for the Hampton, which is good news. It'll help improve water quality. There's a cost to that, and it'll be before council at the next meeting, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Pratt?
I have a couple of things. So I think Dr. Veach and his wife that came and spoke today kind of highlighted some of the concerns I've mentioned and voiced since I've become on council. I just kind of want to reiterate that. I think there's a real communication failure there on multiple levels. I would like to see us adopt a policy as a council on a communication expectation. The fact that communication is continually the number one concern I hear from residents is mind-boggling, whether it's the time and the delay, or whether it's the tone and the way they're spoken to. We serve the public. We might not like that, but we have to listen to them, and we have to be respectful. And the respect issue was clear tonight. I want to mention that I think when we really look at this issue, there's several things in place. We could look at purchasing a camera that's been brought before the council several times. That hasn't been done. But there were concerns about the leafs, and we mentioned automatically purchasing a leaf sucker, as it was referred to, which I think that's a leaf vacuum, but I'm not going to pretend to be a maintenance person. So with that being said, I'm going to make, I'm going to read a letter, and then I am going to ask for one more comment to be made. So I will be submitting this letter at the end of the meeting to Mr. Gamble. I will receive, give a copy to Heather to then pass on for her records and then pass on to the city attorney. "To whom it may concern, please accept the following letter as a formal request or a FOIA request if needed. I'm submitting this request on behalf of the city council. I'm submitting this letter on my own behalf. However, I believe that this information that I'm requesting will be beneficial and useful to all city council members to make informed decisions and better represent the citizens of the city of Manistee. I'm requesting the following documentation in regards to several letters recently received by a concerned citizen with a complaint. One, a copy of all complaints received by the city manager, the Department of Public Works, or any city employee or official in regards to sewage issues, road issues, or the Department of Public Works for the past two years. Copies of all letters, invoices, memos, documentation, and/or logs to be included in full in regards to Mr. Veach's sewer pipe concern at his building at 384 River Street, Manistee, Michigan. A copy of all call logs, emails, memos, written correspondence, including text messages from the city manager to Mr. Veach or any city employee or official in regards to this matter. A copy of all memos or letters that were created within the last two years to help with communication in regards to sewer or water issues. I would like a time and date stamped in regards to when the letters and memos were created and shared out with city staff members and/or officials. Please don't hesitate to contact me if you have any questions or concerns. I'm requesting this documentation and information in my role as a city council member. If there's going to be a charge for this information, please let me know in advance. I do not believe there should be, after checking with the Michigan Municipality League. I would appreciate being able to inspect documents prior to being provided with them. If possible, determine what I would like a copy of. I would also appreciate being provided with these materials in the most cost-effective manner possible. I'm going to ask that we make a motion that we void that bill. It is mind-boggling to me that we would bill somebody two to three years later that there was no communication. None of us would appreciate receiving an invoice from any company after that amount of time. The fact that there was no communication, there's no documentation provided, leads me to believe that there are bigger issues that we need to look at as a council. That's all.
Mr. Kavalski?
Well, I'm kind of in agreement with that on voiding this bill, because I think a couple of years of not getting anything, or any communication is a big issue. To get it after you sell your business for a couple of years later, you get a bill, that's kind of ridiculous. So I'm in the favor of that.
I actually have one question. Would there have been a lien placed on that property if there was an outstanding bill?
So typically, there's a road, so Road Brick is Farm is, is filled out whenever someone requests to break the road. Typically, a contractor, and it was a thousand dollar deposit, knowing that it could be over that. But it seemed like, talking with Mr. McCula, typically, the cost has been under that. So a year ago, we didn't choose to go forward with patching because the cost was too high. I think that bill would have been seven thousand, Jeff, is this? This year that we went with it, it was, I think, thirty-nine hundred was the balance, so it was about a five thousand dollar bill. That, so there were four that went out like that. I agree. I think more notice should have been given. I think updates should have been given that this is coming. But they did fill out a form. It's kind of like if you had road work done by a contractor, you would, if they break the road, typically, either the contractor's going to fix the road and bring it to our standards, or there's, I think, an ordinance that we give notice and then we could, we could repair it and then build them. But I think there are, is opportunity to improve the communication there. I don't know if, you know, if the communication wasn't there, do we avoid a bill for something like that? I think that's, that's kind of where we're at right now.
I got nothing.
Okay. I need to read a letter from the Housing Commission. I just want to say, the next time you read a letter on behalf of council, it would be nice if council would get a copy of that letter before you do that. With that said, I need to read a letter for the Housing Commission members on the forensic audit. After discovering that the Director of the Housing Commission has been receiving compensation increases and contract extensions without a proper vote or resolution by the commission, the city council took several steps, including hiring a forensic auditing firm to examine housing commission operations. In addition, the council learned that the Director hired an attorney to represent the Housing Commission without a proper vote or resolution as required by Michigan Housing Facilities Act. This attorney is now claiming to represent the Housing Commission and is not cooperating with the auditor's request for records. The financial records of the Housing Commission are public records and should not be withheld from auditors. The audit will let us know whether or not there are additional contracts or expenditures that were not properly authorized by the Housing Commission. For the sake of transparency and accountability, I call on the Housing Commission members to place an item on their next agenda that requires Housing Commission staff to fully cooperate with a forensic audit. We should be working together to ensure public confidence in our Housing Commission operations to make sure we are meeting the goal of providing affordable housing for our residents. And the Housing Commission members all will get a copy of this letter. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion?